Good evening, welcome to the November 3rd, 2020 meeting of Glen's Falls Planning Board. We will begin this evening's meeting with the discussion of the total minutes from the October 6th, 2020, 2020 meeting. I'll begin with Ms. Colley.
No questions or comments?
Ms. Murray?
No comments.
Mr. Green?
The only comment I had was I gave to Nora and Ernie about Kevin Lynn.
Mr. Green?
I have submitted my comments better.
I have. Okay. I make a motion that we approve the minutes for the October 6th, 2020, 2020 meeting, subject to the comments transmitted to Nora and Ernie.
There.
Okay.
Yes.
Thank you. Okay, the first item under new business. Matthew Elmer, owner of Tax Map, number section 302.12, block 20, lot 6, commonly known as 18 Kenworthy Avenue, is seeking a curb cut to install a driveway in the rear of the building at this location. Pursuant to City Zone Chapter 220, Section 220-48A/2, this application requires advisory opinion by the planning board to the common council. And... You are?
I'm Matt Elmer.
And you are?
Morgan Tucker.
And your relationship to the application?
Girlfriend.
Okay. All right. She cursed me here. Before we can get our discussion review, is there anything that you care to add, discuss?
Um, I don't know, I feel like it was pretty straightforward. However, when I highlighted the section where I wanted to put it, I didn't mention that I'd be moving the shed. I'll be moving the shed, because otherwise the people drive by there.
Is that it?
Assuming it doesn't fall over, yep.
Okay, thank you. Any members of the public care to comment? Nobody up? No, okay, thank you. Our architectural consultant couldn't be here, so comment is as follows regarding this application. The rear of this property opens onto a one-lane city-owned alley which according to survey maps is called Cricket Alley, or as Picket Alley is typed in the application. Comment: The alleyways provided between back-to-back housing lots in this general neighborhood were originally intended to conceal power slash communication poles, and overhead wires came for property owner vehicle accommodations. That design slash planning was intended to improve the overall appearance of the city's primary streets. The feature I personally wish had been repeated throughout the city's residential neighborhoods. I positively recommend the board's approval of this application as it aligns with the original planning. The board should consider slash determine the disposition of the existing street front drive slash parking. He goes on to say, "The alleyway has no curb. The proposed parking area should be elevated at or above the alley elevation as stormwater ponds in the rear yards of this neighborhood during late winter and spring." Parking area should preferably be paved with crushed stone rather than a non-forest material. I make a comment on that myself. Crushed stone is viewed, when you are analyzing stormwater runoff, is viewed almost the same as paved. So, I'm not sure I agree. I'm not sure, I don't agree with that statement. And I'm an engineer, dealing with that quite a bit. So, anyway, other than that, I have no comment. We'll begin with Mr. Hall.
I have no real objection to it. I think that's what the alleyway was put there for, obviously. I do agree with Dan's comment about making sure that it's high enough that, you know, any of the runoff that does come from that alley doesn't flood out your driveway with the foot in it. Are you going to take out the driveway that's in the front?
Uh, probably just turn it into a one-car, well, it isn't one.
Basically, it's a one-car napkin.
Yeah, poorly maintained when I bought it. But, I'd probably just leave the one car there, just for guests or whatever. I don't mind.
I mean, there's nothing to say you have to take it out. I mean, I understand why you'd like to have one in the back, I think it makes sense. So, other than that, I didn't have any issues.
Thank you. Mr. Akardi, I have a wondering what the dimensions are. I can't see them. All right, this is a dimension.
Oh. Well, I didn't draw it on this one either, but the plan was...
Twenty feet by twenty feet, is that what I said?
Oh, twenty, the dimensions, yeah.
Yeah.
That was my plan.
Yeah, you can see it's on there, it's hard to read.
That's the plan, right? That's our plan, right? Is that it?
Yeah.
I have one more to comment.
You ready?
Nope, no more.
Ms. Colley? I have one either that we've covered already. And that said, any seeker required for this, Mr. Fitzgerald? There is not. Thank you. We can proceed with the move here.
To make a motion of Glen's Falls Planning Board hereby submits the following advisory opinion to the common council. Council should look with favor on the application of Matthew Elmer for a curb cut driveway at the rear of the property at 18 Kenworthy Avenue as presented at the meeting of 3 November 2020.
Second.
All in favor?
Yes.
Aye.
Thank you.
Arthur?
We, now you know how this works. We make a recommendation to the common council. The common council is the body that actually approves or disapproves these things. And they subsequently will issue resolutions with the...
In contract from that.
In contract from that. So, that would be done next Tuesday. So, well, I guess they nail that.
We'll get it out to you next Wednesday, and we can come in later.
Okay.
So, you don't have to attend that meeting, but modify even in contract.
All right.
Thank you.
Very good. Thank you.
What did you guys think?
Speaking of which, Nora, I've never came and got two twenties. I never came and got two twenties from last Tuesday's meeting. Chuck asked me about it today.
We should mail two.
Oh, should it?
Yeah, I don't know. Someone from our house.
You got your son. Yeah, okay. I didn't know if they mailed them out, he mailed Chuck directly.
Whoever made out the application.
I think I did.
Whatever says it.
Somebody will get it.
All right. The next item is Acton Pete's, or of section 309.12, block 7, lot 7. Commonly known as 31st Street, seeking a curb cut to install a second driveway at this location. Pursuant to City Zone Chapter 220, Section 220-48A/2, application requires advisory opinion by the planning board to the common council. And you are? You are?
Pardon me?
Are you Mr. Pete's?
Yes.
Thank you. Before we begin our review, is there anything you'd care to say or add?
I'm not, I don't hear too well.
Okay, sorry. Before we begin our review, is there anything that you'd like to add or comment on your application?
No, no.
Okay, very good. I'll try to speak as loudly. Oh, no, I won't do that, because we all like it. All right. Any members of the public care to comment? Nothing, okay, we'll move along. We'll begin over here with Ms. Colley.
I have no questions or comments right now.
Ms. Murray?
I just wasn't sure what, how big is the driveway going to be?
Pardon?
What's the dimensions of the driveway? Did I just sit on there?
I don't know, whatever, whatever it comes in.
Because it looks sort of tight over there.
Just right where the driveway is, I go.
So, twelve feet across?
Probably, yeah.
Okay, it just looked like it was pretty close to the neighbors there.
Well, it's, yeah, it's probably right down the line.
Will you still have the same problem with snow coming off and hitting cars on that side?
No, I have a parking problem because the tenant is, had a couple of kids that were out of work, and he's letting them stay with him. So, it's a...
Because you have the one long driveway.
On the other side?
Right.
Yeah, no problem there.
They can't all fit in there on that driveway?
No, not on the right. That what you're saying?
Yes.
Yeah, no.
No. Okay. It looked pretty long to me, that's why I wasn't sure the need for the second.
They've been parking on the front lawn.
I saw that.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay, so, but there is enough room for twelve feet on that side.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
Okay. And what kind of surface is it going to be? What type of driveway are you going to do?
Pardon?
You're going to pave it?
Eventually, probably, yeah. Not right away, but...
Okay. That's all I have for questions.
Okay.
Thank you.
Okay, Mr. Green? I have no further questions. I just said, I want you to be aware that the curb cut has to give me another concrete to the sidewalk.
If you make an arrow on them twelve feet, make it ten feet maybe, since then, it's more room from the sides, okay? You can do that. But I don't have a problem with it. And anything else?
Thank you. Mr. Hall?
No, I'm all good. I think that what you're putting there is going to be fine. No problem.
I just had one question. So, you're not sure if you're going to pave it right away, but what are you putting there? Crushed stone? What's the driveway going to be? Crushed stone? You said you weren't sure you were going to pave it right away.
Initially, probably, yeah.
Right, okay, it has to be something durable.
Right, right.
Okay, thank you. I forgot to read. Our architectural consultant had a comment. "As records indicate, this is a one-family rental occupancy on a 200-foot-deep lot. The majority of properties in the neighborhood have one driveway which leaves some green space between neighbors. I recommend conditions and/or options be considered. A, the existing driveway is subjected to snow slash ice falling off the roof of overhangs onto vehicles and park there. B, if the proposed second driveway is also used for parking, adding a second driveway would duplicate that problem and eliminate green space between homes. C, there appears to be adequate space between the house and the back of the lot for expansion of parking, and it seems better to locate slash encourage tenant parking there and avoid a second curb cut and more parking between the neighborhood homes." That's our architectural consultant hold of his comments. The board's attorney had no comment. Is that, is that something you're looking into, to expanding the parking behind the building?
There's not, there's a garage down the right, and there's not much area on the left.
Okay, thank you. All right. No seeker required for this?
No.
Thank you. Okay, I make a motion that the Glen's Falls Planning Board hereby submits the following advisory opinion to the common council, that they should look with favor on the application of Acton Pete's for a curb cut at 31st Street as presented at the meeting of 3 November 2020.
Second.
Second, all in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Now, the count, the common council will issue the actual permit.
Right.
So, they'll contact you next Wednesday, and you can come in and pick up the permit.
Okay, downstairs?
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay, thank you.
Then I'll have to, the forty dollars paid then?
Yep.
Okay. That's it?
That's it.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Thank you.
I think of the old horn that the guy used to... My wife Bobby Sherif says, "Emily, I have two faults. One is I don't listen to her and something else." What did that say in the original, for Don Hume Hayes, for Just Pepperidge? Was there anything in that original resolution?
It didn't look like...
Can we take a look?
Take a look.
I mean, I remember when we did it.
The drywall, the radius, the sidewalks.
But all that stuff's been done.
Right. Our files are inconclusive on everything.
Well, I know they did the radius. I know they dropped the radius so that the trucks could make that corner.
Yeah.
That part I know of. And I believe the roll out, the rollover curves are that, all the way around that whole corner. Yeah. Existing sidewalk itself is going over. Yep. Well, I don't think we have the senior engineers coming to tell what they're doing.
Oh, a personal relation. Which is a lot.
Yeah.
Excuse me.
Cut that wire.
Okay. The next item. Hanaford Supermarket, contract less see of the Legowitz Company LLC, owner of Tax Map number section 309.11, block 3, lot 1, commonly known as 175 Broad Street. Receiving approval for new exterior signage on the building at this location. Pursuant to City Code Chapter 180, Section 180-6A and 180-13, this application requires signed board review and approval. And would you state your name for the record and your relationship to the application?
My name is Jay Ward, I work for Hanaford Brothers. I do all their permitting for remodels, signage, all this stuff that's why you're here today.
Very good.
Um, Hanaford is in the process, this is a...
Hang on.
Sorry.
We'll get to you.
Okay.
Um... Yeah, go ahead.
This is one thing.
What is it?
I don't know if it made it to you, there's only one sign, you've submitted a whole bunch of signs, there's only one sign that's in front of us tonight.
Which sign is that? Must be the one in the front?
Yes.
Okay.
That's the only one you're...
Oh, I thought you were all full. Sorry. No, no problem, no problem. Hanaford's in the process of remodeling the stores, and about two or three years ago, they started rebranding themselves. They keep the same brand, but they changed their icon face just a little bit, and they changed the Hanaford font. And in doing that, they downsized both the icon and the Hanaford to allow a sub-script that says supermarket and pharmacy underneath, centered under the Hanaford. And on this store, I think we have 600, on the face of the building, we have 616 square feet, and we're going to take it down to 462. But if you're talking about just sign A, the buildings that are on, the signs that are on the face of the building are 595.8 feet, and we're going to be going down to So, we're dropping about 160 square feet on that facade of the building. So, like a 28%, 27, 28% drop. So, that's what they're hoping to do.
Okay, thank you. All right, any members of the public care to comment on this? No, thank you. I'll, our architectural consultant couldn't be here this evening, I'll just read his comment. He says, "No comment possible. As stated on the application, detailed drawings and plans are required to be submitted. There are none in my copy of the application." And, I agree, I thought maybe it was just me, I didn't receive anything, did anyone?
No.
So, you don't have copies of what's here?
No.
I got about ten copies here, you want me to pass them out?
Sure.
Oh, I brought those just in case. So, I don't really get it, yes. So, if you can see on the front page, you can see a picture of the front of the store, shows the icon and the Hanaford that's there along with the welcome, the pharmacy sign. And down below on the front page, you see pharmacy sign is gone, you see the revised icon with the Hanaford and the supermarket and pharmacy. And the details of that are on page, page three of that.
Thank you. So, you're actually, you have how many signs? Four? You're just looking for approval for this one now?
That's the only one that, that...
Correct, sign A.
That is the only sign that doesn't meet code. It's over 100 square feet. All the rest of them are approved and done. This one's over 100 square feet, which is the max by our city code, so I have to have one on the side for rework.
Good, thank you. All right. That said, we'll start with Mr. Hall.
Well, I mean, I think it's just basically a rebranding.
It's basically a rebranding, and, you know, usually most companies don't downsize their signage.
Exactly, that's what I was just going to say.
I know, I've done this conversation with them for a long time, but that's what they do.
Yeah. So, I mean, for, you know, in my mind, I think it's a very minimal change. Ultimately, at the end of the day, I don't see a big deal with it. And at the end of the day, the ones, you know, the one that's out on the front sign, out front, that one's all approved already anyway, so I think we're in good shape. I don't think that, you know, other than people noticing that the work's going on, I don't think at the end of the day, it's going to be that much different, so...
Thank you, I mean, I think the benefit to the town is that, right now, you've got a lot of big signage up there, it's going to look much smaller.
Yeah, yeah.
It really is, it's not going to be quite as noticeable.
Yeah, so, yeah, I'm very good.
Thank you, Mr. Akardi. No comment. Mr. Green, no comment? Good work.
No comments.
Leave it to you, Jake.
Guess what?
No comment.
No comment. Our, uh, determining, I forgot to mention, had, um, I think I had it, had nothing, the, uh. Town planning board, no referral required and given no review. Thank you. Yeah, I just read it. No comment.
No comment.
No comment because of.
Oh, we did, we did, yep, yeah. They're all internally lit. These are all channel, channel letters and all that.
The one on the face are internally lit.
Yes.
Little ones below and not with.
Aren't lit at all, yeah. There's an uphand of light coming from the still from hard and lots of those. All good?
Okay. That said. I make a motion to Glensfals Planning Board acting as the Board of Sign Review. hereby approve the application of Hannaford Supermarket, um, for signage at the one seventy-five Broad Street as presented at the meeting of three November twenty twenty. All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you so much. Have a nice evening.
You as well, thanks. I thought I printed out yours, I must have printed out the legal. I said I thought I printed out your agenda, but I think I must have printed out the legal notice and not your agenda because I'm not a lawyer.
Oh. I couldn't find it. I think I misplaced your email.
Just watch the wire something.
Don't you do it?
The. Next item is site plan review, twenty dash zero zero three four. Donahue Candy and Tobacco Company Incorporated, contract less see of Just Beverages LLC. Owner of tax map section three oh nine point two seven, block seven, lot one point one, commonly known as thirty-one to thirty-three Broad Street. Seeking approval to use the building for warehousing at this location. Pursuant to City Code Chapter two twenty, section two twenty dash eighteen, C part fourteen. This application requires planning board review and approval, and you are?
I'm Stephanie Bitter. I'm the applicant's attorney and I'm here with.
Mark Higgins.
The applicant.
President.
Thank you. Is there anything you care to talk about or discuss?
As you know, this building was occupied by Just Beverage. It was, um, used for the purpose of the distribution center. We're making a very small change relative to ownership and what's being stored there. It will be utilized as a wholesale warehouse for Donahue's candy and tobacco. So it was a church, it was water, enough candy. So we're not turning water into wine, but water into candy, which, you know, second best thing. So there really is no physical change. There's no, um, there won't be any signage. There's not going to be any alterations to the building. There's just gonna be a difference in what's occupying the building.
Very good. Okay, thank you for that. See what our architectural consultant, if the leader might submit his comments in writing. Regarding site plan review twenty dash zero zero three four, his comment, owners, agent states, no exterior building or site changes. I have no architectural concerns. Okay.
Amen.
The board's attorney.
I think we addressed my only concern, which was more of a question looking at any, whether any of the conditions that were imposed on Just Beverages when it was granted site plan approval should be continued forward. But we reviewed that and it doesn't look like any of them would be relevant.
Looks like any of the ones that were there that required some physical action have been completed. And the other ones, uh. So we should be good with that.
Can you advise what those conditions were, just so that I know if any of them will be impacting the new use?
Do you have the?
Yep.
Do you know if I just give it back?
Oh, excellent.
I can get your, I can email you.
Thank you.
Okay. Where would we put that here?
Okay. So those are all incomplete.
That said, we will begin with, uh, Ms. Hall.
I have no questions. No, I have no questions. I, I think this is a great fact and I'm so glad that you're staying in Glensfals. I think that's gonna be a wonderful location.
Mr. Green. Mr. Hall.
No comments? Uh, do you want thing, any signage?
No.
No, nothing to use, using it for warehousing or using it for any, any.
We might put a sign like at the door, just.
Yeah, 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 similar to what Just has there now.
Yes.
Okay, no, no issues? Great use of, great use of the building.
You, you have delivery trucks or is that?
We do, yes.
Yeah, they're fairly small.
Small trucks.
The likes where, or penny trucks.
Two hundreds. And we have one medium sized truck and that's.
That's it. Nothing as big as what was, what was there before.
You'll, you'll get, you'll get deliveries to you by truck and trailer.
We probably have four or five deliveries a week.
Yeah, but they're, I mean, not as compared to what Just was doing, four by the day.
Yeah.
Okay, very good. That said, um. Secret type two, reduce the distance from the structure, no, no, uh. No reviews necessary. So that's it. We have a motion. Site plan, yes?
Site plan.
Site plan.
Uh, I make motion that Glensfals Planning Board acting as Board of Site Plan Review hereby grant site plan approval to the project identified as Donahue Candy and Tobacco Company, contract less see of Just Beverages LLC. Uh, owner of what is commonly known as thirty-one to thirty-three Broad Street, uh, as presented at the meeting of three November twenty twenty.
What was that? All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
Excellent.
Thank you.
I'll tell the others.
Thank you.
Comment there, the same in the city.
Not all of your projects stay.
Very much appreciated. Take care.
The goo, the goo word in this thing. I'm going through it and if you go on Google Street, if you go through it. It jumps back to when, so it's right here. This is new, but it still has the old of when, of when that was the old drive going through it. Remember that road high used to split and was gonna make a right so it's after the light? Google Street still has that in there. But, but it has, but it has the other one too. So if you, if you go back one frame. I know. It did, I thought it did a really good job on that. Because then, then if you look at the other one, you can see where they changed it. So now Fine Street doesn't have the, the right turn lane anymore. It made a big difference.
Much better seat up there?
Yeah, yeah, where you have to come to the lane to make a right.
Good evening, okay. The, excuse me, the next item is. Site plan review twenty dash zero zero three five, congregation Shere Tefla. Hope I pronounced that right.
Close.
Close. Owner of tax map, section three oh two point two oh. Block seventeen, lot one, commonly known as sixty-eight Bay Street. Is seeking approval to allow the lower level of the building to be used for classrooms at this location. Pursuant to City Code Chapter two twenty, section two twenty dash seventeen, C part five. This application requires planning board review and approval. And would you just, for the record, state your name and relationship to the application?
Yes, my name is Larry Greenberg. I'm the treasurer of congregation Shere Tefila.
Very good. So that's how you pronounce it, Tefila?
Tefila.
Thank you.
Translates as gates of heaven.
What is it?
It translates as gates of heaven.
Oh, interesting. Thank you for that.
It's the conservative Jewish synagogue in Glensfals.
Thank you very much. Um, are there any members of the public here to comment here at all?
There's nobody watching us? There's nobody watching us?
Well, there's a lot of people out there.
Oh, there is.
Well, don't worry.
That'd get a lot more than normal.
All right, uh. I will read our architectural consultant, but in B area submitted his comments in writing. I'll just read what he had here. Site plan review twenty dash zero zero three five. Comment applicant indicates use and changes comply with New York State Education Department requirements and no exterior building or site changes. Let me get over here with Mr. Hall.
I, I, I mean, there's really, you're just reusing the basement space that's already there, right?
Yes, we have, the lower level had a large activity room.
Right.
And had three classrooms.
Right.
Uh, we now have a combined religious school with Temple Beth El on Marion Avenue. And we were not in the religious school classes for the children are held on Marion now.
Right.
So the classrooms are not being used. We were approached by Bosse's when they lost their space on South Street and wondered if they could use space in our building. We thought it was a, a good use of the building. So they are using three classrooms. They're using them as offices. And they have half of the main activity room and they're using that for their students. And they have two, three, four students in at a time.
Yeah. Okay, yeah, I, I mean, I have no, I have no issues. Um, I think it's, you know, again, great use of the space and it's good that you got somebody that can use it.
Yeah, they needed, they needed the space and we had it available.
That's all, that's all, yeah.
Mr. Carter. Do you own that, um, left hand parking space?
The one that's on Washington?
Yeah.
No, that, that, that small lot that's on Washington goes with the Smith's Flat Building diagonally across the street. We've tried, we've tried to buy it and they were going to give it to us years ago and that, nothing ever happened.
So do you, do you have enough parking for?
Yes, we have enough parking.
No, no comments? Thank you, Mr. Carter. Mr. Green, no more discussion comments. Thank you. Ms. Merk.
No comments.
Ms. Hall. I have none either. It seems like a good fit. And our board attorney, comment, was, uh. Town planning board and review required, secret type two, no review, reduce the existing commercial structure. Thank you for that. That said. I make a motion that the Glensfals Planning Board acting as the Board of Site Plan Review hereby grant site plan approval for the project identified as. I'm gonna get this congregation Shere Tefila. Located at sixty-eight Bay Street. As presented at the meeting of three November twenty twenty. Second, second, all in favor?
Yes.
Aye.
Thank you very much, Mr. Green.
Okay, thank you for your time.
Good evening.
Good evening, thank you.
Okay, the next item. Site plan review twenty dash zero zero three six. Gina Nassevera, owner of tax map. Section three oh two point one six, block eleven, lot thirty-three, commonly known as four seventy-one Glen Street. Is seeking approval to convert the building at this location from commercial multi-use to multiple family dwelling containing four apartments. Pursuant to City zoning, Chapter two twenty, section two twenty to fifteen, D part two. This application provided an advisory opinion by the planning board to the county. And would you, for the record, just state your names and relationship to the application?
Hi, I'm Gina Nassevera. Um, and actually, our, our, we don't yet own the property. It's been a severe delay. Uh, we, uh, will be owning the property within the next couple of weeks. We do have, um, our commitment letter from the bank. It's just been a process trying to close in this place.
So you're the, uh?
Almost owner of the property.
Van D or?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, and I have spoken with Susan Belfort. She is very well aware of what we're doing. She's the current owner.
Who is it? Oh.
Susan Belfort, yeah, yeah.
And you are?
Mark Monahan.
Who will also be co-owner.
You're gonna be the owner as well. Thank you. All right. Before we start, is there anything you care to add, discuss, whatever, to your application?
Um, well, I know that, um, some issues have been brought to light, um, with some, you know, concerns. And, um, I, I was happy to address some of the issues that, um, some of the residents around the property had. And I, I think many of the issues stem from the current ownership of the property. For instance, the garbage cans, um, that I know is a major concern. As Mrs. Belfort was cleaning out the property, she did have, um, a dumpster there and several garbage cans. And I think probably it was her routine to keep several garbage cans. We're planning on having one, uh, small dumpster that's going to be on wheels and it's going to be in the back where nobody will be able to seal, wheel it out, for instance, on garbage days, um, Sunday night probably or, you know, Monday morning early. So, you know, that was a concern that I really don't think, um, should have been brought to light being that we're gonna be different owners. I think the other biggest issue is that it's gonna be owner occupied. We're going to own the property. Uh, we're gonna be living there. Both of my children go to Glensfals. So it's in our interest to have the property as aesthetically pleasing as possible. So I, I know that those are the other concerns. There was a, a concern brought up about Sanford Street School. And, um, Sanford Street School is no longer used by Glensfals. It's leased out by Bosse's and all students who go there, um, are bused. And so the issue that students would potentially be interacting with any possible traffic that this, um, conversion would have, I thought was irrelevant. One person brought up the idea of children playing in the road and I, I'm not sure why children are playing in the road to begin with. But, um, I, I don't think, again, that that should be something that, um, could negatively impact us. The property formerly was a real estate agent and an, uh, agency and a not-for-profit. Certainly, they had a lot more traffic going in and out than we will with an owner occupied house with three small apartments.
Very good, thank you. Uh, let's see, I will, uh.
Sir. Hi, I'm gonna put you on speaker for now. Hi, uh, this is Paul Mancher, twelve Jefferson Street. Uh, me here?
Yeah, we can hear you. Thank you.
Yeah, just had a few comments. Um, I can certainly understand making that property, uh, rented property. But one of the issues we have, and we spoke to our neighbors too, is removing the lawn on the side of the house that's adjacent to Jefferson Street, making that a parking area. Jefferson Street's really seen a lot of improvements in the property in the past three or four years. And, uh, you know, I looked at that, that area with, you know, with the plan is, parking. And essentially, uh. And essentially, uh, it seems like a really degraded property. Uh, trying to put it parking where you have cars basically on a parking pad facing into the, facing on the wall where the lawn has been facing the house. And it seems that generally speaking, if Jefferson City does anything to maintain the attractiveness of properties and not, uh, not let them be degraded, I think that was our main concern.
With all due respect, that's already been approved.
Good, uh, my only comment right now.
Thank you.
The driveways, the curb cuts have already been approved. Um, and we are actually going to be putting in over a hundred and thirty thousand dollars in renovations to the house, um, starting the day we close. So we're, we're gonna be doing nothing but improving the property and actually, um, probably increasing the property values around us. We're gonna be living there, we, we certainly don't want the property to look bad. It's gonna look a lot better than it does right now.
Thank you. Any other members of public? I will, uh. I'm not gonna read, we had, uh, what, seven? None of the letters, uh. Did I read all these?
You don't have to read all of the letters as long as they go in the file or the, what? I think everyone got copies of the letters.
I know one of the comments that I had heard, um, was potentially going to be brought up also was, somebody said that the driveways were going to make, um, the sidewalks inaccessible.
Not so long it takes to get through and back.
Oh, wow, that's interesting. Um, that in no way would we ever have the sideways, um, affect the, or the driveways affect the sidewalks. I mean, that again was, um, a concern that I thought was quite invalid.
Thank you.
You're welcome to discuss anything in them, but you don't have a legal obligation to read them or bait them into the record.
Um, okay, we'll pick that up as we go around. If there are other public comments, I'm gonna move along with the, uh, the board review. I'll begin on this side with Ms. Collier.
So, we, yeah, we are lacking, like, information for snow removal and dumpster, like where the garbage will be, where the snow will be and everything like that.
So there is a side yard, um, there is an aerial view photo and you can see that there is a side backyard, um, sort of adjacent to the garage. And there is, there's currently a raised garden there, if you can see as a reference. Yes, so can I, can I come toward you? So right here, there's, um, it, it doesn't look like a very big garden, but it actually is. Here, here, there's a raised garden. That raised garden we're going to take out, um, it's not in good shape at all. The, the wood around it is quite dilapidated. And so we were going to put a one yard dumpster right there, again, on wheels. So it would be hidden from view, uh, that area is completely, you know, it's, it's basically fenced in. Um, and it's a kind of a wasted space right now because of the stairway anyways. And so it, it, it does look unsightly right now, Susan Belfour has the four garbage cans there, which we would not. As far as snow removal goes, um, we are going to have a company that come in and do the snow removal and actually remove the snow for us.
Okay, so when they do the garbage pickup, where, do you know which company you're gonna, like, have you contacted a company?
Yeah, we actually have, yeah, yeah, we've already, we've already got that all set up.
CB ways.
Yeah. Okay, so they'll come Tuesdays, right?
Um, every, every, every town's different for him. I know he's, I know he's in Davidson Brothers, not Fridays.
Friday, Saturday, Tuesday, every Tuesday they come.
Okay.
Um, so you will bring it out then and they won't have to back in or do anything like that?
Well, we, I mean.
I mean, that's what I wanna.
Whatever they prefer, 'cause actually we would be parked in there and we would be gone. So if they wanted to back in, they could back in.
That driveway will belong to us as the homeowners. So that, that won't be an issue, it would be our own responsibility. But, no, we were planning on bringing it out to the front of the driveway.
Okay.
And it, we are, we do know that the driveway is tight in snow removal, but we've already dealt with that with our company. And, um, they're going to come in and as the snow piles up to take the snow away.
So, okay, and then with that, so the inside, so how much are you changing on the inside? Like, what is the construction inside?
Believe it or not, we don't need to do a lot because it's already set up as a multifamily. Essentially, they had doors though where we would like walls. So we really just have to install two walls and that's it. It's already set up, um, there's already all the kitchens there, all the bathrooms are there. Um, so we're redoing all the floors, the entire interior is being repainted. We're upgrading our kitchen, we're redoing all the kitchens. But it's a matter of two walls going up. That had doorways.
Right. And so like fire exits for them, like what would be the exits and entrances for them?
So the third floor apartment has two entrances and has that one long staircase that you see. And then there's actually a center hall winding stairway going up that hits the first, second and third floor. So they have, um, two entrances, exits. Um, the first floor will have its own, um, garage. So they will get, they could get in through either side of the garage or that side entrance. And then the second floor will also have the two.
So I know, so last time we talked about the parking specifically, we talked about, so just to refresh, and for public comment.
Yes.
Because, um, just things that we have read. Um, currently, is there an occupant with third floor?
Uh, there was an occupant up until August thirty first. Uh, Susan Belfour thought that with the change of hands that she should ask the occupant to leave. She was willing to leave, so she did. It, I could, we could have an occupant in there tomorrow, just cleaning the carpets.
So, um, you'll have three one-bedroom apartments, correct?
Uh, the second, the first floor and the second floor are one-bedroom, one-bath apartments. The third floor is a two-bedroom, one-bath apartment.
Okay, so potentially four, so two, four, at most six, eight, so eight cars. And we figured the long driveway, right, you were parking there, correct?
Yes.
So that would be two, and then there's a shorter parking lot, or parking, so there's like two more, correct? So then at most, there would be four cars on the side, correct?
Uh, we are, we are not interested in having renters that have multiple cars.
Okay.
Um, and Mark already owns several properties and that's something we're very careful with, with the lease. Um, they're not big apartments.
Right.
So we're hoping to.
Single person.
Single person or a couple with one car.
Right.
Um, that's really important to us.
Okay, so then maybe five cars now?
At, at most, yes, yes.
So I'm just trying to clarify some of the things that have come up.
The one apartment, uh, the first floor apartment that has access to the garage, certainly if they had two cars and they wanted to jockey their cars, that's on them. But the other two apartments, um, we're hoping, our idea is that they're city apartments. One car, people that are walking a lot, which we know might limit it, our occupants, but it's what's best for the parking situation.
Um, I think that's it for now.
Hey. I am remiss, I didn't read, uh, architectural consultant's comments. He couldn't be here tonight, so he submitted them in writing. Normally I take them prior to the board's discussion, so I'll read it now. Site plan review twenty to zero zero three six. Comment, A, the so-called quote, third floor, unquote, which contains an existing apartment appears to have originally been an attic and is now used as habitable space. Was this alteration approved, question mark? Does it meet existing codes, i.e. escape windows, question mark? This should be considered prior to approving changes to the balance of the building. B, applicant should submit a site plan indicating proposed alterations will meet parking requirements, provide enclosed garbage, trash, storage, uh, onsite snow disposition, parentheses, not in the street, and exterior lighting.
The apartment was, um, 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 known when Susan Belfour converted it to commercial multi-use. It was under the agreement that she actually would live there. And so that apartment has been there and it's been.
Third floor.
The third floor for instance, yes. That's been known space. I believe the woman, the last one was there for over ten years.
Are you okay with it, Mr. Van Der?
Um, no, actually, I went through the whole file today and I didn't see anything on that. So it's just, it's, this is all new to me.
Okay.
That being said, depending on what happens tonight, you know, to prove you cannot have a third story apartment, this is all, one of the conditions would be if fire marshal and myself goes through and approves these apartments and everything, obviously before anything's ready.
Even create an existing apartment?
Yes, a multi, yes.
Okay, okay, that's.
Yeah, it's a fire safety inspection.
Okay, thank you.
Just to clarify for that, that's because it's more than just one or two, 'cause you're.
Multifamily, yes.
You can come over whenever you want.
Is that, thank you. All right, so, sorry about that, we'll proceed now with Ms. Murray.
That was my good question, the third floor. And also because there's no drive, I couldn't see, I couldn't tell where, like, the egresses were and the ingresses because usually you get journalists to show.
I'm sorry.
The alterations and stuff, so I, I just can't do it very well. So, um, that was my concern, is I couldn't really tell where the egresses were, what was the legal apartment and what the, and the alterations were gonna look like.
Yeah, so as I said, it, um, it's already set up for, I, I know it's hard to imagine, but we, we have to do so little that since we don't have to do any exterior changes other than what we're doing aesthetically, um, it was my understanding that I did have to, um, provide.
But it's going from two to four?
No, it's actually, it's set up for five. But there, um, and the electrical is there, um, but it's never been used as five separate apartments. And there, but there's that many kitchens there, um, it's already set up for it.
Like, how do you get to the third floor? How does the third floor person access it?
There's a, there's a center hall stairway.
And then there's that one out back that's moved way up?
Okay.
The thirty stairs and it's, it's like free gym membership. But the, the, when you walk in, um, uh, there's, there's two. So if you walk in this side entrance right here, that's to the first floor, okay? But if you're on the other side, then that's your access, that's the front, I'm gonna, um, the aerial view where you saw that there's an entrance right here and that winds up, see all the windows, that winds up to the first, second and third floor. And that's also where you access the basement? And we're not even doing anything with the basement, but that's another fifteen hundred foot feet.
There is a room on the first floor that has been two cubicle windows that we do need to put egress window in, so the, uh, the inspector told us that we had to. If we're making it as a bedroom.
Yes, it has the glass, glass block windows.
Yeah, glass box, so he did say that to us, that we need to have that done.
But what about the lighting for the exterior lighting?
Oh, there's a lot of lighting already there. There's plenty of lighting.
In the back where people access that through?
Yeah, yes.
What sort of lighting is it?
It's, it's those big slub lights. But as I said, the, the last occupant was in that third floor apartment for over ten years and she never seemed to mind it. But she could go upstairs and set the stairs, it didn't matter which one.
That's all I have written for now, thank you.
That's it? Thank you. Mr. Green?
Uh, um, we're being asked to approve a site plan and we really don't have a site plan. Uh, so I think what we need for you to do is, uh, bring us the site plan showing the dumpster location, parking, parking cars and, uh.
Do you mind if I just take notes?
Hmm?
Do you mind if I take notes?
No, no, all right. Um, dumpster location, parking, the, the size of the lot, uh, you know, uh, the house, you know.
Lighting. Lighting, yeah. It's not, snow removal off the thing, huh?
I think it will help solve a lot of problems with the comments that we're getting. If we, you know, but we can show that there's a dumpster there and then you can trash cans all of those. You know, things like that. Parking, that we do, the questions on parking, you have to show.
I know like there's a two, two yard or less you got on wheels, anything over a two yard or a four yard, for which it'd be hard to move. But a two yard dumpster, you can move very easily with, high wheel.
If you can just get that on the drawing and present it to us, I think that would solve a lot of problems.
Okay, there you go.
So I heard dumpster location, lot size, snow removal and lighting, did I miss one?
Parking.
Parking, oh.
Just show them, just show them the parking spots.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Carter?
I, I think you overestimated, uh, the dimensions of the parking. I look at, like, on the, today and there, there's, they don't know, they said twelve by twelve, you can't put twelve by twelve in.
I, I just measured, I just, I just measured that again, just the other day I went there 'cause I thought, I heard it was an issue. It's actually twenty feet from, from the sidewalk all the way to the, to the, uh, to the side of the house.
We, we left room, um, when we were talking to the gentleman who's going to pave it as fifteen feet. That way we had room for the stops at the end before, you know, it goes into the house. But there is twenty feet, so in our minds, there is a ample room for a fifteen foot driveway.
I was just there yesterday measuring it.
And that's, that's before the sidewalks.
Yeah, but you, you got, you got, um, pallets to, uh, put up and.
Right, but we have twenty feet to work with.
From, from the sidewalk to the house?
From the sidewalk to the house.
I just measured it yesterday.
Yeah, but you, you got pallets to put up, um, protect the, um, electricity, right?
Right, so that's included in that twenty feet.
That's plus one, that's twenty feet, okay, so.
You put them two feet off, you got eighteen feet to.
This one, this one, you, um, when you figure the parking, just imagine how much. You remember, yeah, because I measured the lot, the last, I got.
Well, I have better dimensions the next time we come.
Yeah, okay. But my, my opinion is, um, I, I don't like the aesthetics of parking like that, um.
Well, when I was there, just the other day, it was all moss, it wasn't even, wasn't even grass. So, you know, it's all, it's, it's just overtaken. I don't know if the sun gets on that side, 'cause it's on the north side, the way the sun comes and the trees are high on the, on the south side, so the sun never gets there, so the grass doesn't grow.
Is that it? Yeah. Thank you, Mr. Perry. Mr. Hall?
Yeah, it seems, I mean, it seems like to me, there's, there's one apartment already upstairs, all, all, all the way up. There's two on the second floor and then you're owner occupying the first floor.
Actually, we're gonna owner occupy the front, first and second floor.
Okay.
The apartments are going to be in the back first floor and the back second floor.
First floor, back floor, second floor. So you've got, basically, you've got the house portion in the front.
Yeah, yes.
So, I mean, owner, owner occupied, if you're gonna be living there, I think that makes a big difference. Um, in, in, in my mind. It's, you know, it would be, it would be something different if somebody were coming in and saying, you know, I'm not gonna live there, I'm just, I'm just gonna rent this thing out and collect rents. And I think that makes a, a huge difference in, in my mind. Um, as far as the, um, you know, as Chris said, there's, there's a fire and safety inspection that has to take place because it is multifamily, so that, that takes care of that. I mean, obviously, there are egress windows on the third floor, there are two means to be egress from the third floor. Uh, it is an existing building, it is there, it's not like this was done middle of the night. It's been there, you know, it belongs Susan's own building and I don't know when she took ownership of it.
I believe it was in approximately nineteen ninety and change.
Yeah.
Yeah, it was the end of the nineties, I don't wanna give a date, I should know that off the top of my head.
So it's been, you know, it's, it's been twenty-five years.
Yeah, it's, she's owned it for a long time.
And, and, as Chris, Chris, you said, it doesn't appear in that file that, in the file for this property that there's a COO on it, but, I mean, that, who knows that as long ago as twenty-five years ago. But, I mean, that, who knows, that as long ago as twenty-five years ago, who knows what Kevin would have had back then anyway. So those are the, those are the things in my mind. I tend to agree with Ron, and I think, you know, something that we can add to the file and say, you know, these are the things, so that we can come back to them and say, look, this is what, here's what you agreed to, here's what we're holding you to.
Okay, okay.
And I think that's, that's something for, for us to do. Otherwise, I'm, I'm okay.
So, you understand, the site plan needs to show the property lines, the building, any features such as driveway, parking, et cetera. And it all needs to be to scale.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Just so you understand.
Yeah, 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 go ahead.
Yeah, at the time that I put this together, I, I had about twenty-four hours, so I apologize. It may have actually been about nineteen hours.
Excuse me. I think what's in the best interest here is the tableists sending a site plan submission, and then we can finish the review.
Do you need a new application or just an additional drawing?
I think just an additional.
Okay.
The application's already in front of us. It's just supplemental.
We're just on the table list.
Okay.
If you want to get all that stuff and drop it off, the same quantities to my office, and then I can make sure.
And so we'll tentatively say that we'll be on the docket for November?
You'll be on for December.
Oh gosh. I'm sorry. I teach. Does that give you an idea of how stressful this summer is? Yeah, that won't be a problem at all.
That's the third Wednesday, Chris, for this month?
Yeah.
The third Wednesday?
There is only this month is a cutoff.
Oh, okay.
Many, many information.
I'm with you.
You're already on the agenda.
Right, with the tabling, with the tabling thing, I sometimes push that on a little farther beyond that.
Yeah, that's not a problem. And actually, hopefully, we'll be the owners of it by then.
All right.
So you can talk to me about a building from then on too.
So with your agreement, I make the motion at the planning board. Tables, site plan review, point at zero zero three six. Eunice Sevira, owner, contact Andy, four seventy-one Glen Street. Pending submission of a site plan showing property line, building location, surface features, et cetera.
Second.
In favor?
Yes.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Enjoy your evening.
On the future.
How was the exterior from the review of last month?
That's what somebody sent me somewhere in the future. A couple of other things.
No, it looks like the phone's got.
Oh, it's got a message.
Somebody called.
Brendan Long.
One of the things we have discussed at our annual Christmas party to get together, we had, and and I was going to talk to the board very specifically about the Fenimore's. And I started thinking about it, and given the situation we're in, and I'll just refer to the board, I wouldn't know if it was proved to set that up for, I'm not sure if the, if Fenimore's, again, given the situation with COVID, would accommodate potentially, you know, ten people in the gathering. What are your thoughts? I mean, I'll proceed. I won't be here at the next planning board meeting. Ethan, it's been gracious not to visit here.
Didn't last year, didn't we do it in January so you could be here?
Yeah, we did. We both spoke to you last year. I was going to mention that.
I can't wait to push it one more month, you know.
And, and see what, see what happens. I mean, I'm, I'm all for that. I, I think that's a great thing. And we probably wouldn't have, I mean, it, it, going into Fenimore's, it's, it's getting a lot busier. I mean, we've eaten over there a couple of times, and it, and there, there are. Yeah, 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 I've seen larger groups that have been in there, you know, six, seven, eight people at a time. So, I, I'm sure that they would accommodate us, and we may have better luck in January.
Okay, that's fine with me. I'll talk to them. I don't remember what day, date that is, or, we do it just like.
Yeah, right after, right after whatever that is.
Our January one would be January fifth.
What is it?
January fifth.
Thank you.
Yeah.
I will talk to them, and I'll convey whatever, say, even, plus it out at the next meeting. Is there anything, one of these days, I'll kind of get together with Mr. Fitzgerald and go over this, our, our recommendation for chapter two twenty.
Mike? Two, two twenty Glen, I had talked about that when we were here last month. I, I did submit paperwork to the board's office for the canopy. It went straight to the common council, did not come here, but we had reviewed two twenty Glen already. This was just the, the protrusion, the, the encroachment permit that went along with that. We did change the layout of the canopy. The one that had been presented here originally was a, was a straight canopy that was going to be steel and glass. They felt that it would be better served to kind of match two twenty-eight Glen Street, the associate's building that has the flared bay window with the copper on it. More than likely, once they see the price of copper, they're not going to go with copper. They're probably going to go with a standing seam roof on it, either a dark bronze or a black. The black will more than likely be the color they go with because it's going to match the windows. The windows are in for the front, for the lower portion. The windows are all in for the upper portion. The attic, the third floor apartment has been open to the attic. So from the third floor to the underside of the roof is twenty-two feet in the front portion of that building. And the circular windows and the arch windows are now open into that third floor apartment.
It's beautiful.
It is stunning. It's stunning. I mean, it's, it really came out great. So I just wanted to let everybody know that I did submit the paperwork, and the common council did give the encroachment for that canopy.
Thank you. Anything else?
Did we have something else that carried over or tabled, something else that tabled? Oh, yeah, three, three thirty-three. Three, three thirty-three, I just, I knew there was one other thing that had been tabled before that I didn't know.
There were no additional submittals?
No, they hadn't, no, they hadn't made any.
Okay. This is it. Motion to adjourn.
Second.